Um, July 4th is right around the corner.
It is.
You got any big plans?
July 4th is never, I have fun, but I, it's never been my favorite holiday. You know, I like Halloween and Christmas.
I know.
But, um,
Halloween and Christmas.
Any, any excuse to get out on the water or be outside and have fun, I'm good with. So no, I don't have any like planned plans, but I always am watching.
A girl's trip.
I know.
No, I'm serious. We say this all the time. We need to plan a girl's trip and anybody that wants to go can go as long as they're a girl.
Well, I thought about this one day. I'm like, why don't I take the boat before we go to, before I go to work? Park it out behind the, the restaurant over at Venetian Gardens, take the keys out and then like in the middle of the day, when we're stressed out from work, we can run over because nobody's going to steal my boat during the day. We can run over during the middle of the day and just take the boat and go to have lunch somewhere.
Oh my God, I love that.
Because during the day I've noticed that I sit still, I get engrossed in what I'm doing. We don't even go for our walks anymore.
I know and I need to do that. I got out of my habit in my 10,000.
We've got to start getting out. So how cool would that be?
That'd be awesome. I'll do it.
And I don't, I don't think anybody will steal the boat.
Look at you being Ferg today or no Phineas. You're being Phineas.
I'm being.
You're being Phineas.
I'm, I'm coming up with stuff. We, I know.
Awesome.
Cause I texted you the other day in the middle of the night, I think it was, it was late that I was the one who knew what we were going to do that day.
Yes.
I know what we're going to do today.
Yes.
So yes.
I know.
I think that would be great.
I do too.
And then the next time we have our guest, Sean Parks, who's coming on today on, we can talk about all of the things that we need improved on our waterways and our green spaces in all of our areas.
Yeah. Cause we do need some improvement.
We do.
Yeah.
But I, but I'm excited. We get to talk to him because that's one of the reasons why I love to be here in Lake County is because with all the stress of everyday life, I need outdoor, outdoor time. You know, a lot of times I'm marching around my backyard in Fruitland Park, which is not that large. Um, just because I need outdoor space.
It's important. I like to, I look, I do it too. I like to, I love, and people may think it's weird, but I love to walk barefoot in the grass ground. I like to do grounding and I walk around.
Yep.
You know, I love it and I don't want to see less of it.
No, same reason. I like to mow my own yard. It's instant gratification.
Not allowed to mow the yard anymore. Cause one time I went, I did.
I wasn't allowed for 20 years.
Put it in the wrong, whatever I did, I might, may or may not, may have run over a Sago palm.
Oh.
Didn't know where the brake was, tore that sucker right out of the ground.
Well, I love my one. It's, it's my fave.
And the zero turn now that we have, I can't figure it out. My brain doesn't work that way.
I have a zero turn and I love it.
I need a steering wheel.
I'm usually going pretty fast on it, but it's instant gratification. So.
Welcome to the style podcast presented by Plaza Cadillac and Plaza Lincoln, where our drive to be the best starts with you.
Welcome to the style podcast presented by Plaza Lincoln and Plaza Cadillac. We'd also like to thank disability consultants and Lake Center Home Care. Today we're talking to district two, Lake County Commissioner Sean Parks. Thanks for joining us today. We're going to start right out of the gates, talking about growth because all three of us here at the table are natives. And that's, we never get a chance to say all three of us here are Florida natives, but the growth around here.
It's, 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 it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Like I was just, before we started, I was telling you all last night, I was driving down rolling acres and I hadn't been down there, I don't know, in a little bit. The road has been completely shifted. There's a roundabout, there's all these neighbor. I'm like, oh my gosh.
Yeah. We know that's not your district, but yeah, it's still, the growth is crazy and it's a double edged sword because we love it, but at the same time, we love all the green space and we love all the animals. Where are they all going to go? We keep paving over everything.
Yeah. Uh, well, it is this little topic called growth management has just been a little bit on our radar recently. Absolutely. It, I, you know, yeah. Central Florida native. Uh, I actually grew up in Seminole County and it was a time when I could, I won't tell you how old I was. It was in the eighties, I guess, but we could walk, I could walk from, uh, you know, Altamont Springs area all the way over to Tuscaloosa where my grandparents lived and I would pass through, you know, even some farms and some rural areas. And you try to do that now or in Seminole County, it's just, you know.
You like playing Frogger?
Yeah, exactly. Had to cross all these dangerous roads and everything.
You couldn't do it now.
We've said, we've seen so many, so much change, uh, you know, even, even since my wife and I moved out to South Lake County in, uh, 98, 1998, uh, you know, there was only one traffic signal on highway 50 at the time and it wasn't even, it was four lanes too. So all this has happened and I, I get it. I totally understand it. Uh, all the frustrations, uh, with the traffic primarily, the schools I know have been a question, but you know, something that's packed, that I'm passionate about as well as the, the impact on open space and some of our natural areas too.
I think that's the thing for me. I've always been more of a conservative on the political scale. I don't like big government. I don't like them telling us what to do, but at this, as the older I get, I've started to realize how important it is to have the green space and how I'm, you gotta find an equilibrium, something like a happy medium. Because it does feel like, especially the roads, the roads are just, it's almost, I live in Fruitland Park and we have family in Mount Dora and used to 30 minutes maybe, but you're lucky to get there in 45. It's like Altamont Springs now sometimes.
That's right. Yeah. I think it's all about balance. Uh, and I'm, I'm like you. I think we're, we're probably on the same, uh, from the same political spectrum and background, if you will, uh, absolutely. I like to keep government minimized. Kind of let business do its thing. These are, you know, these are true, good values, I believe, and I think you do too as well. At the same time, we're not a county of, you know, a hundred, 180,000 or 200,000. We're 440,000 now. So there's a, there's a role for us, I think, to show leadership, you know, good growth management, leadership. Work with the business environment, work with the residents as well. Get them involved, create a culture that, uh, you know, looks for that balance. Values the open space.
Right.
Uh, I think is, is our role personally with that.
I agree.
Yeah. When it comes to the open spaces, you know, everybody's got a different idea about where that's from. There's, there's a lot of, um, you know, I guess we can say it on, on here amongst us friends, but you know, a lot of the Yankees is we would say that move from up north. Yeah. You know, they have a different perspective about what open space is, or what growth management is, or even what a traffic situation is, you know? People coming from all over the place have different perspectives on growth too. So that's, it makes it a little more difficult. You know, we're not the Lake County that we, we grew up in.
Right.
It's, you know, 440,000 people, maybe more with all these people coming through.
You're right. Well, it seems like minimal to people that are coming down here from up north. They're like, oh wow, I have a yard. Well, it might be
A postage stamp.
A very small yard, but I grew up in Sumter County, so I had acreage. So I'm thinking, wow, what they're considering green space is a park where I like wide open, you know, green swamp, rich lawn, like the area down where you are.
Yes.
That's, that's huge. So as developers and as the county and with what your background is, you know, what are we, what are we thinking? What are you thinking as your role on the commission to, to manage it correctly and wisely? Where is that going?
Yeah. No, I, I really appreciate the question and I, I think, um, it doesn't appear that there's a lot going on right now. I think that there's some of us in sort of the government world that, you know, I've been kind of talking about this for years. It is the old proverbial trying to, uh, turn the mindset around like a, like a, turn the battleship around in a sense of changing the mindset. Um, and how we develop the, the quote built environment, as you will. What we need to start thinking about, and we're, we're starting to do now, but is, is, um, yeah, we know development's going to come, but let's also be aware that, uh, we have data and, you know, people that have been researching this for years that know where wildlife corridors are, know what kind of buffers work. And so in a sense it's, you know, working, um, to make sure that we have policies that are put in place at the local level, the cities in the county, uh, to encourage, uh, well, basically prevent development in those areas, encourage it in the, the better suited areas for development and, 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 and require a higher bar, if you will, a higher standard for that, for that development.
That's the key. And I think for me, the more, I sit on a planning and zoning locally and, um, one of the things I always try to consider is, again, I'm, I believe in free market. I believe, you know, but you have so many people coming from out of the area, buying land to develop it. And there's never, no one ever sits down with the local residents that have been here for years and says, okay, this is what we're thinking. And I get it. I like money. Everybody wants to make money, but you gotta remember the people that still have lived here for years. It affects us positively sometimes negatively sometimes.
Most of the developers too, that we see they're coming in, they're, they don't have a vested interest.
They have no vested interest. They're buying land from, they're coming from Tampa, South Florida. And they're like, we're going to put these, um, houses with, you know, 40 foot front. I'm like, but you know, also it goes back to comp plans in your cities and your county.
Yeah, exactly.
It just really does.
Well, I'm impressed. Uh, anybody that puts themselves on a planning and zoning board, first of all, you're glutton for punishment.
Yes.
No idea.
So I am, uh, very impressed.
Thank you.
We need, we need people, uh, more involved like that. Uh, I'm sure you do your research. Um, and that's what this is about.
Text messages and the phone calls afterwards where she's like, these people are crazy.
It's just for me.
It is frustrating.
You know, and I'm just, we're just advisory, but I think that still plays an important role because again, I'm not someone that is anti-growth whatsoever. I hold a real estate license. Um, my business, my day job is a CEO of a home health, skilled home health agency. So all of these people moving in do benefit me.
It does.
But I have to respect the residents here and how I want to live. And I'd like to be able to get off Lewis and the red road without waiting for 20 cars to go by, or them having to put a traffic light, you know?
And, and a lot of our generations aren't retiring like a lot of the people that we see coming down from up north. So it is hard for us to relate and understand it because we're not retiring that way and moving into that, that kind of community. We're already here.
Yeah, exactly. And we have, you know, maybe some different values. We might, uh, you know, have, have, have a business that we want to keep here and we gotta continue to work and maybe work longer into life as well. And that's okay. That's what we want to do.
Exactly.
Yeah. It, I think it's, I think it's, uh, citizen engagement is really important too, being informed, you know, knowing what's going on. Getting involved with shaping policy. And that sounds kind of boring and dry, but the more people know about that, I think they'll, they'll be better, a better part of the, the solution. And you're absolutely right. Uh, we see it at the county. You know, I mean, every, almost every zoning hearing now, there's, you know, some controversial question that's coming up and, you know, I do, I do wonder, and have to ask a lot of times, okay, where are you from? Um, you're, you're buying land speculative in a lot of, a lot of terms, a lot of cases. And, um, you, you, you know, come in and pitch that we have to accept this. And I think,
Thank you.
I think we don't have to accept it.
We don't, we don't.
We can ask for a higher bar. Uh, we're not, we're not, um, against property rights. I mean, we're all, we, we're probably all for property rights. It's the foundation of this country.
Right.
Property ownership, but at the same time, there's that balance and.
In respecting the property rights of the people that were here first.
Exactly. Yeah.
Let's not put a 200 plus home development at the end of a two lane residential road, and that's the only form of egress. Let's really stop and think about it. And it's things like that. I'm like, you know, people liked, you know, back in, when we were younger, we could ride our bikes places, kids could go and do, and that's a little bit, it's not as easy to do that anymore.
No, no.
No, no.
Not unless you're in certain types of neighborhoods that are more conducive to it.
Yeah. The, the trails and it's not a, not a good trail network. I mean, we're working on that. So I.
That has gotten a lot better.
That, that, that part has gotten better, but it's, I think part of that is because it's just the traffic, you know, the, the intense, the intensity in traffic, it's a lot higher. I mean, it's just, it's just different now than it was, you know, even 20 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And.
All right. We're going to take a quick break and we'll be right back talking to Lake County Commissioner Sean Parks.
You pay what we pay during the Lincoln employee pricing event. Save up to 7,000 on select Corsair and Aviator models, up to 9,000 on 24 Nautilus, or up to $20,000 on remaining 24 navigators while supplies last. Also enjoy special financing on 24 Corsair Hybrid. Plaza Lincoln is proud to be your local dealer for over 50 years because our drive to be the best starts with you. Highway 441 across from Leesburg Airport.
Welcome back to the style podcast. Today we're talking to Sean Parks, County Commissioner here in Lake County. I know you do your coffee with, um, people once a month, right? Your coffee with a commissioner.
Generally once a month, but we're, it gets kind of, you know, one or two months, but yes, yeah.
You try to do it once a month.
Coffee conversations is what we call it.
Coffee conversations. So have you had any weird things where you've really gotten beat up in a, in a coffee conversation?
No, most of, most of the time they're, they're pretty good. Uh, probably, um, the, the funniest thing that happened was I had a coffee conversations at the Clermont Chick-fil-A. And this was right after we, we, the county commission voted to, uh, cut funding for a bus route down in South Lake County. And so I pull up into the parking lot and I'm thinking, okay, usually we have maybe, you know, 10 or 20 people at these coffee conversations and the school board member meets me there and he goes, he goes, I, I, we look around, the parking lot's packed. You know, this is, this is it.
Was this, it was a school bus route?
Uh, no, it was a.
It was a county bus?
Yes. Yeah. County transit route. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, we look around and this is, uh, you know, seven in the morning or 7:30 maybe. And the place was just packed and I, he goes, yeah, you, you need to know what you're about to walk into at Chick-fil-A here. And they were, the place was packed with people that had, were on that route.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, uh, so they were there to let their, let their, uh, thoughts be known about how that route was cut. Now, what I did do was, uh, it was a little tough at first, but you know, that's what we do. We're, we get put in an uncomfortable situation sometimes. It's all right. I knew what I was getting into when I signed up. Uh, we, I ended up, uh, promising them and I came through with my commitment, but I walked that route with them. Maybe a month later, it was, uh, you know, 5:30, six in the morning, pitch dark on, we're walking on 27 and 192 down there. That's where this route was. So imagine that, how crazy we're talking about traffic, dangerous situations. And I walked it and walked it with them. It was harrowing.
Yeah.
Harrowing with the drivers at, at five or six 30 in the morning. So the, the, the idea was, okay, you cut our route. Now this is what some of us are going to be walking to every day between where the route used to pick us up at Four Corners and take us over to near Disney.
Yes.
And that was kind of my funny story. What came out of coffee conversations was I, I walked the route, the bus route with them and I made some, made a few friends. They at least build a little respect at least.
Well, that's what I think they probably respected you. Cause I remember when Lake County first started running those bus routes. And a hundred years ago, I managed a bank down in the Four Corners area. Um, it was First Federal back then. And it doesn't exist anymore, but back then the only thing that was down there was that one, um, restaurant. There was an old restaurant, Randy's, Randy's Restaurant or something that's not there anymore. Tons of orange groves and a Winn Dixie in our, our bank. That was pretty much all that was down there. So I remember when the bus route started running and the housing developments that were there, it did give those people. So they probably did respect you quite a bit that, that you got out there and, and did that with them. Cause I know when the bus route started running here, just for fun, a friend of mine and I got on the bus and we're like, let's see where the bus goes. I saw parts of Leesburg I'd never seen before, but I was like, this is funny. But so that's a cool idea that you walked it with them and got to see what they were.
Yeah. And that's what, that's what comes out of, uh, coffee conversations, usually experiences like that. That one was a little funny just because, you know, I'm pulling up into the parking lot of Chick-fil-A thinking, okay, I'm going to go get my chicken biscuit, which is, they're awesome there.
Oh my gosh, you know, gotta love a Chick-fil-A.
Right? Yeah.
I had the nuggets for lunch yesterday.
And I'm thinking, okay, this will be good. We'll have a few conversations, but the place was packed, you know? Now my friend who owned the Chick-fil-A loved it, you know, a bunch of people in there buying Chick-fil-A, but, uh, so it was, it was a good experience and we do, we do those. And what we try to do is support a local business. I know Chick-fil-A is a franchise, but usually we're at some coffee shop or something like that.
But they're usually locally owned too by someone in the area, run, managed. Yes.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Seriously, you can't go wrong at a Chick-fil-A.
No, you can never go wrong. That's a, that's always a good fallback for sure.
But it does make you seem more, um, approachable to your constituents. They can come up and have a conversation with you and, and.
Yeah. I mean.
We're a big county, but we're a little county.
You know, that's what this is all about. And there's, there's a lot of power in local government. I mean, as you know, I mean, you can come up and say, you see me in the publics, uh, you see me at a restaurant, you can ask me questions. You know, our, our congressman, God love him. Uh, and I mean that, it's just in general, not any of ours in particular.
All of them. Yeah.
All of them. You know, they're in Washington a lot, doing, doing hard work at times, um, other work we may question, but you know, they, they're up there and yeah, and that's all right. They're, but they're not as approachable. You're not going to run into them often. You're running into the city officials, you're running into the county, uh, county officials in 67 counties, close to 500 something cities in the state of Florida. When you talk about the impact that can be created or can come from, uh, putting the cities and the, the counties united, you will have, we will have much more an effect on our quality of life than anything Congress could ever do.
And on that note, so let me ask you, cause that is something that I've, I think we've talked about it with the, some other people, maybe it was with Alan Reisman, because we interviewed the mayor in Leesburg. How does, um, the relationships work? So, you know, as far as like, you know, the county commission, these, and then the individual cities, but do you guys butt heads a lot? Do you find there's some camaraderie?
Uh, uh, yeah. And, and you've asked that question nicely, uh, about do we butt heads? But, but a huge shout out to Mayor Reisman. I mean, I have, uh, in particular recently, uh, had some good conversations with him. Uh, we text a little bit back and forth.
We love Alan.
We do. We love, you know, uh, we, one of my, one of our best friends in the world is another city commissioner, Mike Peterson. And, and I actually really think Leesburg is doing an amazing job and a lot can be said for the city manager. He does an amazing job too. But I do often wonder, you know, because they have their own, what's really, really important to them in the city, their agenda. And then, you know.
Well, uh, so this is really good and you're, you're really kind of the first to ask this in a forum like this. So I appreciate you asking.
You're welcome.
It's, it is very important, the relationship between the cities and the county. And, and let's just take Leesburg for instance. Um, so it's, I, uh, had, you know, my thoughts about Leesburg, a lot of them were good. I had questions too in the past, I'll be, be honest. Um, like I did with other cities as well.
We did too, when we, we grew up here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. A little rivalry, rivalry going on there between the cities, but, um, but I, just by taking some time, especially recently to get to know, uh, and reacquaint myself, I should say, with, uh, what's going on in the city of Leesburg has been very eye opening to me. And I think what's going to be important and, you know, moving forward with the mayor and the city manager and really the whole commission, uh, city commission is, you know, just a little understanding of, of the way things are in Leesburg, some of the history of Leesburg being the biggest city in Lake County for many, many years. And I know there's a, a little back and forth between Clermont and Leesburg about who's bigger, but there's a lot of history. Leesburg as a larger city, uh, probably has a little more history than Clermont did and, and in terms of being larger and being sort of the center of the county. And understanding that, the political dynamic, uh, I think has been really, uh, eye opening to me. So I look forward, you know, especially this coming summer towards the end of the year, as we're talking about growth management. Having a good relationship with Leesburg is going to be super important. I think the county just needs to understand, okay, we as commissioners, here's Leesburg situation and, and we're getting some understanding of, uh, from Leesburg. Okay. Here's what the county is facing as well. 14 cities trying to show some leadership at the, the level of sort of above. I don't mean that in a bad way, but.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Just the organizational thing. Yeah. And I don't, this might not be correct, but doesn't the county, you're more, the roads like.
More regional. Yeah. It's probably a better term.
Road issue, we're gonna, it's a county issue.
Yeah, exactly. I mean.
So it does affect you guys. I mean, if, if a city approves a development or they approve a business in an area, but the infrastructure as far as roads aren't there.
Correct.
It might be something they might want to discuss with you.
Yeah. And, and that's where I think some of the problems have occurred in the past with all cities, between all cities in the county. I'm not going to single out any city.
Oh no. Yeah. Definitely.
But I think that.
Just a thoroughfare.
Exactly.
So much so.
Well, yeah. And we could talk about that for a second too. The same thing is going on in South Lake County with, uh, major roads that come through. You know, 27, down there it's 27 and 50, up here it's 441, 27. You know, something that's important for people to know too, and the frustration with traffic is a lot of that traffic is not actually Lake County or Sumter County residents.
They're just passing through.
It's pass, people passing through and they say, Sean, how do you know that? And I say, well, when you sign your little deal for your cell phone, you don't know that everybody, they track your data. They don't track us personally, but they, they can know.
Yeah. They know where we're traveling.
They know where you're traveling. They can get, they, they can't get a name per se, but they can track, you know, this zip code was traveled from, this many people going through this point at a certain period of time, from this zip code, from this zip code, so on, so forth. They know where it's coming from. So.
Learn something new every single day.
We have that data and, and we, I mean, the county doesn't have it, that's DOT, but we can, we can ask for traffic counts and where they come from, and that's how they, they get it. So yeah, Leesburg and Clermont, for instance, uh, face especially tough challenge of, people are stuck in the, that traffic on those roads, but it's a, it's a, you know, there's a state, state issue with that as well.
They're passing through, going to Orlando or Tampa.
Yeah. And then we do have, I know one of the worst areas is South Leesburg, um, near Singletary Park. Where the, you know, and there's an apartment complex here, and then there's the, you know.
Lakes. We can't, we haven't driven through the lakes.
Well, how do you widen that? And it's, you can see it kind of like gets really bottlenecked in there.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, the, the coordination between the cities and counties, like you just said a minute ago, is very important when it comes to roads because a lot of the growth is going to be, uh, especially more urban type growth, um, is, is obviously towards channel, towards the cities. Yeah. So we need to make decisions, uh, you know, not in our own silos. We have to have that communication, uh, be very intentional and be a process oriented. It sounds really dry and I, people's eyes roll back, you're so boring, Sean, you know, when you say all this, but the joint planning agreements are really important.
It's important though.
Yeah. Because it makes, you know, it makes people, and there are people, there are, uh, great talented people that the cities have and the county have staff members that are really geeky, and I mean this in a good way, that liked planning and they will, if you get them together and you, and, and you intentionally make it be intentional and, and purposeful where they're talking about, okay, before you approve this development, we need to get a developer's agreement to make sure that road is paved. Uh, so don't do that in the county. There's that sort of that back and forth dialogue about impacts to each other. That has to happen. And, you know, it hasn't happened in the past, uh, a lot. And it's been a big problem. But that really is.
Really does need to start happening everywhere.
Yeah, it is.
It does. It needs to.
Basic respect for everybody and everything here.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I think that is, um, you know, at the risk of being naive or overly optimistic. That's the first thing we have to do is get those joint planning agreements in my mind, uh, you know, formalized or ratified, if you will. And I think things will get better. We won't, we won't see it the, the day after those agreements are approved. There'll still be a lot of frustrations, but a few years down the line, you're going to see how this communication has gotten a lot better and you're going to, there'll be a lot less questionable decisions, I think.
All right. We're going to take another quick break and we'll be right back with Commissioner Sean Parks.
Plaza Cadillac in Leesburg invites you to experience our most iconic lineup ever. Lisa Lyric, the best selling luxury EV in the U.S. for only $4.29 per month. Or choose APR as low as 4.4% and savings of 2,000 on our three row XT6 or remaining 24 XT5s. Because at Plaza Cadillac, our drive to be the best starts with you. Highway 441 across from Leesburg Airport.
Welcome back to the style podcast. Today we're speaking with Sean Parks, Lake County Commissioner for District Two. I read that you are a Eagle Scout and I know in our area, I don't think scouting is as, as big as it used to be. And I don't know if that's because there's a lot of kids that are inside playing video games now, instead of getting out into these green spaces we were talking about. But it, it doesn't seem like there's as much interest, but I know that, that changed you, molded you and helped you turn into the person that you are today. So what's going on with all that?
Absolutely. Uh, uh, once an Eagle Scout, always an Eagle Scout. Grew up just outside all the time. We were kind of talking about this, um, you know, before, uh, before we started, uh, we would just be outside, you know, all of us probably growing up, you were outside doing something. Same thing here. We were, we were probably, if we weren't camping once or twice a month, that was a, you know, kind of unusual for us.
I was digging holes in the backyard for my Barbies to have a swimming pool.
Yeah. Me too. I was outside all the time.
At least you were outside.
I was outside. I was outside all the time.
And that's unfortunate because we're seeing, we're still seeing a lot of that, you know, the, you know, this, all the data shows that kids are more, you know, they're doing this a lot more. But that's not us in Lake County. We are real Florida, real close. We, we want people to get outside, see the environment, see, uh, Florida and places that you can still go in Lake County where Florida has been untouched or virtually untouched. And we want people to experience that. That's who we are. And, uh, right now we're, we're, uh, we have this countywide conservation strategy that is, uh, we spend maybe about two years to, to put in place. And that's how we're going to, um, hopefully encourage, you know, the county and all the cities to work together and strive towards the goals of that, um, of that countywide, uh, conservation strategy.
That's where your JPA, your joint planning agreements would come.
Amen. Yes. Yeah.
So that's what we need to have done in all the local cities around here, Leesburg, Fruitland Park, Lady Lake, because we do want to keep them.
Yeah.
It's like, when I drive by some of these pastures and I see cows, I almost want to take a picture and be like, well, they probably won't be here tomorrow.
Oh, and my kids are fascinated by that. I grew up on acreage surrounded by cattle and my family has, still does in Sumter County. And my kids are like, oh my God, there's a cow. There's a cow. And I'm like, really? I've deprived you because even though we're on the lakes every weekend, my parents live off of Lake Griffin and I love that when I'm on Lake Griffin, I can, there's a lot of shoreline that isn't developed and there's nothing on it.
Right.
So what's, what's the plan for that? How are you going to get all the, everybody to work together to conserve all that?
Well, here's something that's really cool and awesome. Uh, you know this, but last fall, this county passed with 80% of the voters, voters passed this in a general election, presidential general election, the highest turnout ever. 80% of the voters in Lake County supported that land acquisition. uh, supported that land acquisition referendum. So fifty million dollars we will spend as a county on uh, preservation, conservation areas, uh, lands used for trails. And it's not just really fifty million dollars when you think about it. It's, it's uh, really, I say it's about a hundred and fifty million dollars. Because when you have fifty million dollars that we have committed, especially at such high numbers, you have quote, skin in the game. And you're able to pursue uh, grant opportunities with the Water Management District, DEP. You're able to get these resiliency grants to purchase more land. So your dollar goes a lot further when you have that referendum passed. And we have quote, skin in the game. So it's very exciting. And what uh, what's going to sort of guide that and how that money is spent is this countywide conservation strategy. So it's science and fact based. There's a lot of, uh, again, remember two years that was spent to do this, working with the University of Florida and Stetson University to map these areas uh, that we know have the highest or, or, or will require the highest priority for preservation and conservation.
What are some of the areas? Can you tell us what some of the areas are?
They're, they're uh, usually pretty close to the wildlife corridor. So it's uh, both uh, in North Lake County, uh, and in South Lake. A lot of them are around Green Swamp. We have some towards uh, Lake Apopka, the Ferndale area. Uh, Wilson Island, I know, and, and south part of the county has been mentioned, but then the north, there's a whole host of sites uh, with trail accessibility that we kind of look at as well. Um, uh, you know, Wakaba Basin, a lot of the parcels will probably, you know, come out of that, uh, that region. But really, that, that process and the, the committee that's being set up right now at the county, the Citizens Advisory Committee will guide that. So it'll be a, a combination of using the science and data, but then also feasibility. Because as you know, you know, some landowners are more willing than others. There's uh, economics that are involved and some may not be cost feasible. So all that's going to play out over the next uh, year or so, but that is exactly why, thank you so much. That is exactly why the joint planning agreements are important. Because we need every city to buy into that document. And we all, we're all on one, we're all on the same page. It's one process that we're all doing.
Well, I think, I know they have their, everybody, each city has their own things they see as the most important. However, they're not an isolated island that it doesn't affect everyone else around them. So it just makes sense that you would have joint planning agreements. To me, I don't know, that makes a lot of logical sense.
It does.
But also I wanted to ask about the workshops. Are you talking about things like this in the workshops that y'all have?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for asking about the workshops.
Shayna and I'll show up at some of those if we know when they are.
Well, when you do, uh, and I'll give you a plug, please. We'll recognize you'll make a stand.
Maybe Lincoln will give us a car to drive.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, no, really excited about the, the workshops. We've already had one uh, at, at the time of this recording. We've had the Charter County discussion. We've got another one coming up, uh, this coming week. There'll be another one uh, related to the comprehensive plan for Lake County. Cause we are changing our comprehensive plan and land development regulations.
That's good.
One coming up on the twenty-third. It's really cool and exciting. It's the agricultural summit, as we call it. It's been a lot of questions about why are all these agricultural lands being, you know, transitioned into, into subdivisions? I mean, we got these beautiful arable soils, you know, that we're growing great crops on and, and now, now we're growing, you know, subdivisions.
That is exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, we're popping up subdivisions. I was gonna say, so it's not as simple as saying, hey, that farmland shouldn't be a subdivision. I would, I prefer it not be a subdivision, believe me, as probably you do.
Right.
But there's a lot of history that's, that's got led up to that point. Um, there's property rights, there's reasons why that, that person, that family, sometimes a fifth generation or third generation, they can't do agriculture anymore and.
Family owned doesn't mean that the rest of the family, that's their dream and they want to do it. So.
Exactly. Yeah. So there's a lot of, that goes into that. We're going to have that discussion on the twenty-third of June at two P.M. In the county commission chambers, uh, Commissioner Wilton Simpson, Agricultural Commissioner for the State of Florida will actually be there.
Oh, wow. We might need to go to that one just, yeah.
Go and, and yeah.
I'll put that on our calendar.
Put it on the calendar, yeah.
Put it on our calendar, yeah.
And then on June thirtieth is the, the, the infamous or, or famous uh, JPA meeting.
Oh, I'm coming to that one.
That's, and that's right here in Leesburg.
It's open to the public? We can go? Okay.
So the city commission, everything will be there?
At least one person from each city uh, commissioner council should be there, maybe more. And we're going to be at a round table and it'll be here at the beautiful Venetian.
The Venetian building.
I think if we can, what I would like to say to all of our friends that are in politics and all these cities and in the county, just get your ego in check and think about the greater good and the greater picture of what's going on. It's not just about what your agenda is for your city. It's the bigger thing. And if we don't make a plan for what's going on, a lot, I feel like being a native, if we don't make a plan and we don't plan now for all of this, a lot of these subdivisions that are going in, because I spent many years financing homes, people that are buying them, their kids, their grandkids, they don't want to maintain them. They don't want to live like that. So when you drive down twenty-seven and all you can see is rooftops where you used to see orange groves.
Right.
Those are going to fall into disrepair. You're going to have a massive issue with that. Slum areas, if you want to call it that, where they're not being taken care of because people aren't interested in that or they aren't going to keep moving from up north to those areas. So that, I think it's, we're doing ourselves a disservice by not paying attention to that and not getting our egos in check and saying, we've got to work together if we're going to survive.
Yeah, not every tax dollar. I get it. I get what happens when you get, bring more of a tax base in, but when you annex everything in, sometimes it's just, it's, I don't know, you're, it's almost like you're selling your soul for the instant gratification and the revenue, but yet you're not thinking long-term.
Right. Is it sustainable?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, exactly. And there, there's a lot of land use patterns that just are not, they're not sustainable. They're not fiscally sustainable. We got to think about what we're doing to our kids. And you, you touched on it, uh, twenty-five years from now, what's the cost for the city and the county twenty-five years from now to take care of all the roads?
To clean up that.
Resurface, to clean up, to provide the public services that people expect. Remember, it's way different than when we were growing up, what people expect from their government.
Right.
Coming from different places and what their expectations are. And you're exactly right. Thinking about the long-term costs is part of it. And, and checking the egos. Thank you so much for saying that. And, and I want somebody to tell me if they think I'm being too, too uh, egotistical and, and self-centered. But the discussion has to be, what are we doing uh, for the next generation? And I know it's easy to say that, but that's our decision-making lens.
Right.
Uh, both for the cities and the county. I want what's best for the cities. The cities, um, although they are centered around their own city, which is great. Leesburg has got a cool history, awesome identity, and I don't want it as a county commissioner to be the same as Claremont.
Right.
I want them to be completely different, have different ideas. I think that's a strength for the community. But at the same time, uh, Claremont resident and a Leesburg resident are Lake County residents.
Right.
And they pay taxes too. And these are, these are, you know, this is our region, Lake County. It's a big region, you know, two hours from the north end to the south end. It's big. It's hard to do that, to deal with all that, but, but we are one community in that sense. And so we got to look at it like what's best for the whole county, but, but also our cities too. And, and they're, they're, you know, it's, it's admitting sometimes, oh, I was wrong on that or, oh, I didn't think about that. Yeah.
I totally respect. If you're, if I don't agree with you, but you come back and say, and I can do it too. If we say we're wrong, you know, I didn't look at this side of the issue or whatever. I much would rather someone do that than stand on it just because they want to be right.
And we need to remember that our vision and the plans that we're putting in place now are going to outlive us and they're going to last for generations. So the, the instant gratification from the, the revenue that's coming in from the tax dollars and the um, everything else that's flowing in from the new development, we need to remember that that's, that's right now. This is bigger than us. This is bigger than all of us. This is going to sustain our state and take it into centuries. And, and our heritage and our history here.
It's so important.
It is important, but we also need to remember and learn from our mistakes. I love history, but we need to learn from our mistakes. We don't need to cover it up and, and hide it. We need to say, these are the things that we did wrong and here's how we can fix it or possibly fix it. And we've got a lot of great minds and people that we've elected with your background, with, with planning. Um, we've got to pay attention to that. People have to take it serious. So I encourage, if anybody listens to our podcast that is from any of these areas, to work together. Check your egos at the door, move forward and make some decisions, decisions based on long-term growth. Because it's impacting our, us, our children, our grandchildren, a lot of future generations.
And people need to get involved. There's this, it can be very frustrating, I know. But at the same time, if you don't say something, it can just, well, I think a lot of people have gotten very um, over the past, you know, I don't know, since twenty twenty probably, you know, politics kind of left a bad taste in people's mouths for a lot of reasons. And so they're like, well, it doesn't matter what I do. And I'm like, if you don't speak up.
It does matter what you do.
If you don't speak up and say something, we, no one knows, you know, you have to, you gotta be the squeaky wheel.
You do. And, and here's what you can do. Uh, you can um, be involved, um, take time to, you know, educate, get yourself informed. Because you're going to have ideas probably that we're not thinking about. This is representative government. We need to hear from you.
Right.
And I, I hate when I hear about that. Same thing, uh, oh, I don't want to do it because they'll never listen. That's not true. We do listen. Some of us do at least. And, and you should never give up on that. Because again, I'll go back to what I said earlier, there's sixty-seven counties, close to five hundred cities. Much more of an impact can be made if we're all uh, working together at this level than anything that can be done federally. Uh, and what you hear on, you know, Fox News or CNN, whatever, uh, has nothing to do with how we, what we can do here as a community.
Right.
And you're, you're right. As we've become pretty divided, uh, really divided and it's tough right now.
There's nothing more powerful than a group of concerned citizens that are not afraid to get out there and do something.
Well, and on that note, I know we were talking on the break, um, those, the workshops are amazing. There was some, we've had feedback. Uh, Style magazines have feedback on their Facebook page and things like that. Curious why the meetings, the workshops are during the day when they're working. Although that is your working hours too. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
Yes. Well, as a, as a county commissioner, I'll say, uh, we're always on the job, but uh, we are. But that is, uh, essentially that was a part of it is, is that, you know, it's scheduled during the day. We have a lot of staff that's involved, people coming from different places, speakers. So they're usually speaking during the day. I totally get the question and we're working on it. I'm going to try to uh, hopefully get a couple more through the summer. Uh, we do additional meetings where we could do them in the evening. Now, we have had some. We went to Ferndale recently, a couple of months ago at, at night and they loved it. And the place was packed. Little old church in Ferndale, Ferndale Baptist.
Get through, that's cool.
And we'll do that. Um, and we need to, but to your point and the questions that you have received, uh, you're absolutely right. We need to do more of those. There needs to be kind of a mix, a blend at least in doing that. It's tough. Well, I will say that they're, they are uh, recorded. So Lakefront TV, um, and I think uh, South Lake TV are going to record those.
Oh, okay.
Those meetings. So there'll be a chance for people to, you know, watch them and weigh in afterwards if they want, you know? Um, I, I know it looks like we're about to, to wrap up here. So I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you.
You're good.
But I, I uh, and I, I feel like we could talk for hours, so.
We could, yes.
So easy to talk to.
Please have me back, but I did bring a gift for you.
Oh, we love presents. They make my eyes light up.
Yes, yeah. Um, so.
Oh, and I love coffee.
Yeah.
I love it.
These are the Coffee Supreme mugs.
These are great mugs. Discover Lake County, I love it.
I love it.
Yeah. So you can, you know, next time, uh, please have me back sometime. We could, we could talk and I'll bring my mug as well.
Yes, we may show up at your coffee conversations.
Exactly. That's it. Yeah, exactly.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
For having me. I really appreciate it.
Moving on. Thank you for joining us today on the Style Podcast. Once again, we'd like to thank our presenting sponsor, Plaza Lincoln and Plaza Cadillac. We'd also like to thank disability consultants and Lake Center Home Care. We'll see you next time.
This has been the Style Podcast, presented by Plaza Cadillac and Plaza Lincoln.
Nobody wants an aging family member who is unable to care for themselves to be home alone. Lake Center Home Care believes the best healing happens when you are most comfortable. The company provides exceptional personal care in the comfort and privacy of your own home. Whether you need skilled nursing, physical therapy, home health aides or companion services, your loved ones will enjoy peace of mind knowing you're being taken care of and treated with respect and dignity. Lake Center Home Care is locally owned and managed with a team of highly qualified professionals who are passionate about taking care of their neighbors. Call three five two, three one five, zero zero five zero, or visit go L C H C dot com to learn more about this amazing company.
I'm so glad we got to talk to him about all the.
He's so awesome. He's great.
Growth that's coming for Lake County. Cause I think it's, I mean, and we do have a vested interest in the growth that's happening here. Because we're here, we work here.
We were here first.
We're here all the time. And it is important to look ahead to future generations and for all these politicians to get their egos in check. Because it's not all about them. It's about what we're leaving, legacy that we are leaving for future generations.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure, um, houses on postage stamps across the world around us. And I was really, it was really cool to hear him talk about that uh, joint planning agreement thing.
Yes.
That every single city in this county should be signing so they can work together. And if they can't do it, we might need to do some workshops on teamwork.
And you know what? If the people around um, the county and these cities can't get on board, we need to, we need to keep that in mind when it's time to vote. And we need to get them out. Because if we're not all on the same page, then we're going to have a problem, long-term. And we can't just think about what's happening right now in our county. We have to think long-term.
It's not instant gratification anymore. We've got to think about long-term.
Because this is.
Because we didn't think about long-term and that's kind of why we're at where we're at now.
Right. Because if our, if our kids and future generations are going to stay here and choose to stay here, they've got to have a reason to stay here. Not, we, we raise them here, we send them through the public school system, they go away to college and then they move far, far away.
And we definitely need to have him back on.
We do. We need to find out updates on how it's going.
Cause I was shocked about the seventy percent number leaving. You know, um, maybe we'll get Plaza so much business from our winning personalities. They can hire some people and keep them here in the county.
That's right. I agree.
And let's drive a car.
I agree.
I like the red one.